...regarding newspapers, radio and television. Whereas the City of Port Jervis Common Council has recognized the need to maintain indoor established accounts to conduct regular business, it is hereby resolved that the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis directs the City Clerk Treasurer to utilize the Times Herald Record as its official newspaper for the year 2015 with the Gazette and Pike County Dispatch as alternatives when necessitated for legal notices, local laws, ordinances, advertisements for bids for materials, equipment and services as may be required during the year 2015 and be it further resolved that WDLC be designated as the official radio outlet and Port Jervis Deer Park TV also known as Access 23 TV provided by Time Warner Cable under the present cable franchise agreement be the designated television outlet. I'll make that a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Ritchie to approve a resolution assigning newspaper, radio and TV for the year of 2015. Discussion? All favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis regarding banking and depositories. Whereas the City of Port Jervis Common Council has recognized the need to maintain and/or establish accounts to conduct regular business, it is hereby resolved that the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis directs the City Clerk Treasurer to utilize official depositaries for the funds maintained in the checking and savings account of the City of Port Jervis for the year of 2015 as follows. TD Bank for general operating, water, capital, money market, recreation, industrial development agency, senior citizens/ Regeri legacy account, urban development and action grant payroll, Rachel Deach memorial fund, small cities grant and USDA water clarifier reserve funds. M&amp;T Bank for trust and agency, federal drug forfeiture and city drug forfeiture funds. And I'll make that a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Belcher for a resolution assigning banking and depositories for 2015. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis. Signature requirements for disbursements. Whereas the City of Port Jervis Common Council has recognized the need to maintain and/or establish additional internal audit controls over the disbursement function of its regular business, it is hereby resolved that the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis directed the City Clerk Treasurer to notify official depositaries of the requirement for dual signatures for disbursement of funds maintained in the checking and saving accounts of the City of Port Jervis effective April 1st, 2006. The requirement of dual signatures will be considered met by a combination of either the City Clerk Treasurer, Deputy Clerk Treasurer or Chief of Police and signature of either the Mayor, Councilman at Large and/or Chairman of the Finance Committee. Other types of business transaction may be completed by the City Clerk Treasurer and/or the Deputy City Clerk Treasurer as necessary to conduct regular business and approved via the Finance Committee and Council committees. This requirement will be for the bank accounts as listed in the annual depository resolutions with the exception of the accounts maintained on behalf of the Fire Department. I'll make that a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Ritchie to...
Just so everyone is aware on this discussion, that this signature requirement is the first change that we've made since 2006. We wish to add the Chief of Police has an internal signatory and that is simply because we have had an extended vacancy in the position of Deputy City Clerk Treasurer. And I would like to go on vacation coming April so I get somebody else internally to be able to...
We felt you were responsible.
By the way, you're going to be on the signatories, I have to tell you that.
Until after she gets wet.
A resolution to assign dual signatories on our accounts. I have a motion by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Your next meeting?
Next meeting is on Thursday the 22nd at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Walagrosky, Fire and Emergency Management.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to wrap up 2014 for the Fire Department. From Chief of Police, he gave us total alarms for 2014 was 438 calls. That's the first thing. Next I have, Dear Mayor Decker, the members of the City Council has hereby requested that the below named member of the Port Jervis Fire Department and company stated be removed from the active membership roles effective this date. John P. McGowan, Tri-State Host Company Number Six for non-payment of dues. Make that a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Walagrosky, second by Mr. Bell to remove a member of Host Six for non-payment of dues. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
Dear Mayor Decker and members of City Council has requested that the below named firefighter be approved for interdepartment transfer stated George W. Padgett from Tri-State Host Company Number Six to Howard Wheat Engine Company Number Four. Make that a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Walagrosky, second by Mr. Siegel to approve a transfer from Tri-State Host Company Number Six to Howard Wheat Engine Company Number Four. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
Dear Mayor Decker, members of City Council has requested the below listed events be approved for the Port Jervis Fire Department and company stated. Never Sink Engine Company Number One. What I'll do is I'll read them all and then we'll prove them all at the end if we don't mind. January, for Never Sink Engine Company Number One, January 17th, Old Timers Night. February for CPR class. March, spaghetti and meatball takeout. April for a 10-week club. Raffle, September 19th, the 10 Midtown Parade. November, spaghetti and meatball takeout. Wallington, New Jersey Christmas Parade. And for a date to be announced, to have a Burger Bash, or Rescue Three, Super Bowl Party on the 1st, June 14th for a booth at the Soapbox Derby. May 9th, car wash. June 13th, car wash. August 15th, a car wash. Engine Five, February 8th, Super Bowl Party. They're going to be a little late for that, I think. I'll correct that for them. February 1st for the Super Bowl Party.
They might be still partying on the 8th.
April 3rd, Good Friday Pizza Takeout. May 16th, Old Timers Night. June 14th, Pizza and Funnel Cake Booth at the Soapbox Derby. August 1st, Sullivan County Parade. September 19th, Midtown Parade. September 27th, Pizza and Funnel Cake for the Fall Festival. December 20th, Kids' Christmas Party at the Firehouse. Engine Six, we have April 2nd, Gas Raffle. June 19th, Golf Tournament. And September 3rd, a Gas Raffle. Port Jervis Fire Department, January 31st of this year, Eight Hour OSHA at the High School Cafeteria. That's all we have listed for those companies at this time. I make a motion we approve all the previously mentioned activities.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Walagrosky, second by Mr. Belcher to approve the events that were listed and stated of the Port Jervis Fire Companies of the Department of Port Jervis. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
Dear Mayor and City Council for the Port Jervis Fire Department, 25-year and 50-year members for the month of January. Mahakama Holken Ladder Company Number Seven. Joel Cole Senior, 43 years. Never Sink Engine Company Number One. Robert Barber, 43 years. Robert Long, 42 years. William McCann, 45 years. Chief Jeff Rose, 29 years. Which by the way, we all say happy birthday to Chief Rose tonight. For Delaware Engine Company Number Two. Michael Grodnick, 67 years. William Morgan, 43 years. For Rescue Three. Hank Roberts, 54 years. Joe Trotta, 53 years. Mike Rowley, 35 years. For Howard Wheat Engine Company Number Four. James Gill, 68 years. And for Excelsior Engine Company Number Five. William Towneage, 43 years. Tri-State Host Company Number Six. Charlie Ball, 44 years. Wally Martin, 43 years. Mayor Kelly Decker, 27 years. Okay, one more. Dear Mayor Decker and members of City Council has hereby requested that the below named persons be approved for active membership in the Port Jervis Fire Department and company stated. Elizabeth Enright, Fall Rescue Salvage Number Three. Daniel Howell, Tri-State Host Company Number Six. Andre Bell, Tri-State Host Company Number Six. Members of the Board of Officers of the Fire Department approved this application back in December and by the firefighter's company stated on the application. Make that a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Walagrosky, second by Mr. Bell to approve the new members of the Port Jervis Fire Department. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried. And yes, next Monday is a holiday, but I'm asking that we have the Fire Department Fire and Emergency Management Meeting here in the council room, 6:00 PM. Those who can attend, please do. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walagrosky. Mr. Siegel, Code and Legislative.
Thank you. Before I do that, I want to do a shout out to Mike in Georgia who watches this meeting via the internet all the time and to Maria and Bill Mann who are on vacation and they're watching on internet. And there's always a reason for why I do things and the reason I did that is that I would like to attempt to put the Code Committee meetings on the internet and on Access 23 so that people that can't get here and don't read the paper or listen to the radio might have an opportunity to watch it or tape it on TV or under computers. In order to do that, we need somebody to volunteer to be a cameraman. So if we have anybody that would like to...
Camera person.
Camera person. If, I'm always politically correct as noted. If somebody would be willing to do that, and meetings don't last too long, usually they're done before nine o'clock.
What? Is that correct? Not the code meetings.
I would graciously accept their help, even more than one would be nice, but it would be nice to put that out there, but it's difficult to run the meeting and have the people participate and do it at camera same time. So I put that out there if anybody wants, they can call me 856-6150 or stan Siegel2@gmail.com or the mayor's office. Thank you. Now, the last Code and Legislative meeting was held on January 7th right here at 7:00 PM. I like a motion to accept the December minutes.
I have a motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Belzo to approve the December meetings of the Code and Legislative. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. And we firmed up quite a few topics at the last meeting and they'll be forwarded to the Corporation Council to be put into local laws or whatever is necessary. Those agendas and minutes can be found on portjervisny.org, the city webpage. They also, if you don't get there, you can email me at stan Siegel2@gmail.com. I'll email a copy of whatever you want back or if you call me, I can make other arrangements to get them to you. As I said earlier, it's very important that we have public input to all these laws and all these fees and all these changes. And at the next meeting, we'll be talking about some pretty big issues like humane society and things like that. So participation either in person or via email or a letter would be appreciated. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Second.
Oh, wait, we got old business. Next meeting, Stan.
The next meeting is February the 4th at 7:00 PM right here.
Thank you, sir. Public Works and Environmental Affairs, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I'd like to do is to just kind of review our last DPW meeting that was held on December 15th. Some of the things that were discussed were the water clarifier project which is taking place at our water plant at this time. We also discussed the Jersey Avenue East Main Street traffic light at the top of the hill. A discussion about the DEC consent order in Wagner Place. Also a discussion dealing with the demolition of buildings on Gordon Street and East Main Street. We also discussed the storm line repair on Pennsylvania Avenue and the cleaning of the lines on Barcello Street. And the last thing that we brought up at the meeting was a discussion on the Orange County Hazard Litigation Mitigation Plan meeting which is coming up. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the December meeting at this time.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cunningham to approve the minutes of the DPW meeting and second by Mr. Bell. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
Little update right now on public works, garbage and recycling will be on normal schedule this week, but next week due to the Martin Luther King, holiday garbage and recycling will be one day late in all wards. And the fourth ward will have paper and cardboard will be done on Friday, the 23rd of January. Just a reminder that the city's compost pile and burning pile will only be open on the second and fourth Saturdays of each month. So for the month of January, it was already open on the 10th and it will also be open on the Saturday, the 24th. At this time, winter parking rules are back in effect for the winter months. The ruling states there will be no overnight parking at any city streets from the hours of 1:00 AM through 6:00 AM from December 1st through April 1st. Please hit your car off the road from 1:00 to 6:00 in the morning. Christmas trees will continue to be picked up when time permits. Please put them out at the curbside and they will be removed by the DPW. Our next DPW meeting will be held tomorrow night here at the council chambers at 6:00 PM. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Police Committee, Mr. Hendrick.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee met on Monday, January 5th. You all received a copy of the December 2014 monthly report and I motion to accept it at this time.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the December monthly report by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Bell. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
The Port Jervis Maine Society represented by three board members attended and discussed proposed changes to 2015 contract between the city and the Maine Society that governs the acceptance of animals brought to the shelter by the city, Animal Control and Police Department. Society board members and members of the police committee provided an exchange of the information including question and answers pertaining to the proposed changes. Although committee members tentatively agree to the changes, I'll request an executive session under new business to review the contract with all council members. The next police committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for Monday, February 2nd, 6:30 PM here in the council chambers. That's all I have on that, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. On to Liaisons, CDA, Mr. Hendrick.
Thank you, Mayor. The CDA last met on December 17th. There are two new grant opportunities that need application by the end of next month. The Housing Trust Fund Corporation and New York State Affordable Housing Corporation announced the availability of approximately 38.4 million estate and federal funds for the following programs. 25 million for the AHC Affordable Home Ownership Development Program and 10 million for the New York State Community Development Block Grant Funding for housing activities. The first, the AHC Affordable Home Ownership Development Program includes the acquisition rehabilitation of owner occupied homes for sale including one to four family homes. And also home improvements to existing owner occupied one to four family homes. In the event the homes are to be located in a mixed use structure, then any costs associated with the non-residential uses are ineligible costs. The 2014 maximum award is $35,000 per unit and applications are due February 13th, 2015. The second, the New York State Community Development Block Grant Program includes CDPG housing activities and these funds are available for housing projects. Activities include rehabilitation and home ownership that primarily benefit low to moderate income persons. And the 2014 maximum funding for the CDPG housing activities for cities is $400,000. Applications for this program are due February 27th, 2015. Ms. Maginski is here to answer any specific questions with regards to these applications. For the Community Development Block Grant, a public hearing is necessary. So at this time, I'll motion that a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program be scheduled prior to the next council meeting on January 26th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hendrick, a second by Mr. Belcher to set a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant before our next council meeting on January 26th. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
And then I'd like to introduce two resolutions for approval of filing the applications on behalf of the city. And the first is Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis regarding the approval of filing of an application of the New York State Affordable Housing Corporation Office of Community Renewal Affordable Home Ownership Development Program for 2013-14 Acquisition and Rehabilitation. Whereas the City of Port Jervis is submitting an application with the New York State Housing Corporation Office of Community Renewal for home ownership, acquisition and rehabilitation due no later than February 13th, 2015 via hard copy. Whereas the City of Port Jervis Community Development Agency will perform and be compensated as sub recipient. And whereas the New York City AHC's program goals are to, I quote, "to promote homeownership among families of low and moderate income for whom there are few affordable homeownership alternatives in the private market" and to, quote, "and to stimulate the development, stabilization and preservation of New York communities." Whereas the subject acquisition and rehabilitation will be limited to one to four unit owner occupied dwellings by program designation, income eligible families with a maximum unit grant assistance of $40,000 per unit in program eligible locations within the City of Port Jervis. Now therefore it be resolved the mayor as chief executive officer is hereby authorized and directed to file an application as directed to serve as the authorized representative of the City of Port Jervis and the New York State Office of Community Renewals hereby assured of full compliance by the City of Port Jervis with certification attached hereto and made a part hereof. I make that a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Hendrick, a second by Mr. Ritchie for a resolution to approve the Affordable Home Development Program. Discussion? Just in this discussion, this is part of the steps that we need to take to take some of these homes that we have in the city, rehabilitate them and be able to get people into those homes that actually will own the homes so they will be homeowner occupied. He mentioned one to four units because we'll be doing it in my pushes for really single family homes. That's what they'll be developed as. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
And the second, approval of the filing of an application for federal assistance under the New York State Community Development Block Grant Program administered by the Housing Trust Fund Corporation. Whereas the City of Port Jervis is eligible to apply for a maximum of $400,000 in federal financial assistance for housing rehabilitation. Whereas to secure financial assistance, it is necessary to send a New York State Community Development Block Grant Application to the office via the application, online application system on or before February 27th. Whereas the city's CDPG program will provide funding assistance for housing rehabilitation of units of which at least 70% will benefit low to moderate income persons. And whereas this Port Jervis Community Development Agency will perform and be compensated as a recipient. Now therefore it be resolved that the mayor as chief executive officer is hereby authorized and directed as follows to file an application as directed by the New York State Affordable Housing Corporation to serve as the authorized representative of the City of Port Jervis and the New York State Office of Community Renewals hereby assured of full compliance by the City of Port Jervis. I make that a motion.
This is a resolution for federal assistance housing rehabilitation to rehabilitate units up to 400,000. This is the federal assistance. A motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Cunningham. Discussion? Ms. Maginski, can I just put you on the spot for a minute so people understand? Hopefully you have this answer, I think you do. Could you, could you tell us what the low to moderate income housing income needs to be or is?
In Orange County, it would be 80% of the median income. And for a family of four, that is just about $66,000 a year.
So if you're of a family of four and we were able to start up one of these programs and you made 60...
Some $66,000.
$66,000. You would be eligible for one of these homes.
Yes. In the City of Port Jervis, approximately 66% of our residents are eligible for these programs.
Thank you. Thank you. So it's, people sometimes think, you know, I make too much money to be able to, to be able to afford this. And there's no age restriction, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. Did I make, I had a motion. Do I have a motion you need to... Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
And again, there's a public hearing on that application prior to the next council meeting. And I thank the mayor for not asking me those questions. That's why we have Valerie here. And the next regular meeting of the CDA is January 28th at 7:00 PM, second floor of the Pike Street Rec Center. That's all I have on that, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. IDA, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. The IDA has not met this year. We are scheduled to meet this Wednesday at 6:00 PM up in the council chambers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. ADA, Mr. Hendrick.
Thank you, Mayor. The ADA met on September 18th. The next quarterly meeting was scheduled for December 11th. Due to conflicts, it wasn't held. We didn't have a quorum. It will be rescheduled for an undetermined date in January, announced at a later date. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Siegel, Housing Authority.
Thank you, Mayor. The last Housing Authority meeting was held on December 23rd. The only major bit of business is that the community room reservations I spoke about before were scheduled to start today. And the next meeting is January 27th at 7:00 PM at Hillside Terrace. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Walagrosky, Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. The Recreation Department is sponsoring two field trips this winter. Trip number one is a snow tubing trip at Fernwood Resort in Bushkill, PA. This is a great family trip and requires no experience, just the love of tubing down the snowy hill. Cost for this trip, including transportation, would be $30 a person. The trip is scheduled for Thursday, January 22nd, in which the bus is leaving Port Jervis at 4:45 PM. You snow tube from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM and return to Port Jervis approximately 9:00 PM. For trip number two, it's an indoor water park trip to Split Rock Resort in Lake Harmony, Pen, yeah, Lake Harmony, Pennsylvania. This is also a great family trip and fantastic way to beat the cold, at least for one day anyway. Cost for this trip, including transportation, is $42 a person. The trip is scheduled for Saturday, February 21st and the bus will leave Port Jervis at 8:30 AM and return next pocket approximately 5:00 PM. For more information on both of those trips, contact Recreation Office at 858-4045 or email PJrec@frontiernet.net. The Recreation Department is sponsoring youth karate lessons this winter. We have set up registration for Saturday, January 10th, which was this past weekend, from 10 to 1:00, and January 12th through the 14th from 4 to 7:00 PM. Registration will take place at Epces Tank Sudo Academy at 35 Front Street. Lessons will be held here as well. The cost is $50 and the program is for boys and girls ages five and up. The lessons start Tuesday, January 20th. The Recreation Department's fifth and sixth grade youth basketball league will start this Wednesday evening, January 14th at the ASK Gym. Games will be held 6:30 and 7:30 PM. Games will be played every Wednesday until February 25th. The youth center will be open 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Monday, January 19th and Martin Luther King Day, those hours. Regular youth center hours are following. Monday through Thursday, 3 to 7. Friday, 3 to 6. Friday, teen night, 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Reminder, school is closed due to weather or holiday. The youth center is open from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The next Recreation Commission meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, January 15th at 7:00 PM at the rec center. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Tourism, Mr. Belcher.
Yeah, the Tourism Board had a meeting on December the 17th. A combination holiday and short business meeting. Bill Schill handed out a printout of the idea that he came up with to have a civil war reenactment plus some sort of presentation on the Red Badge of Courage in Orange Square. And the Tourism Board fully supported this idea and had quite a discussion regarding it. Our next meeting will be tomorrow night at 6:30 in the downstairs conference room. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ritchie, Zoni.
Zoni Board. The Zoni Board met on January 6th and had a...
Zoning Board. The Zoning Board met on January 6th and had a public hearing for Mr. David Gove, 36 Hudson Street, regarding extension of the 240-day vacancy for discontinuation of pre-existing noninforming use.